Want to start recording? Okay. Very good. I see that. The only one who's not here is Peter, and that's because he's in Mexico. So, okay, I will call to order the Planning Commission Workshop Meeting for Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. I acknowledge that here in the conference room is myself, Wayne Bealer, the chairman. Nelson. Nelson's with us. And I'm drawing a blank on your last name.
Deliorni.
Deliorni. We should know that. I also see that, that. I believe Wilson Fesi is with us on the phone.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Will.
Yeah, welcome.
I also, I also see that our new members, Daniel DeCarlo and Frank Dembowski is here. So. At the next meeting, we will, we will introduce Daniel and Frank a little bit more. Parkly, I guess you would say, since today is an informal meeting and we will have no votes today. First on the, first on the agenda, we have the Reading School District to present the STEM High School Land Development Plan at eight oh one North Ninth Street. And I will hand it over to the big team that we have here from, from the Reading School District.
Good evening, first go through introductions. I know that in the past, many of us that have been on the team and presentation. As we were asked to present what our plan of the district be, we felt that it would be appropriate bring our, our year shift to be important today. We've already talked about why to go forward. Start with introduction. All right, sorry.
I'm Dr. Jennifer Murray, Superintendent for the high schools. I'm Julianne Fine, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Chair, Larry. And by his own resolve, it's always critical that this is great.
And I'm Wayne Gersh, by Angela, Assistant.
I'm Jamie Lynch, with New Engineering. I'm Project Manager, Construction Manager, Assistant. They need perspective.
For these days, I was our, sound was consigned to us. Thanks a lot.
Let's check to see the sound working for the first people that are in on the Zoom. Did you hear that okay? Anyone on Zoom?
Yeah, we, we can hear you, you just sound like you're far away.
That microphone is a little bit. Turned down or for some, for whatever reason, so we have to speak up. Or having our voice carry. Is that what you want? Well, the three of them are teachers, so. That microphone, this one works fine. Just to frame the discussion this evening, it's really at the will of the commission how we see what our process was after first the land development planning commission meeting. We received your commission approval, thank you very much. We've since resubmitted for the next planning mission meeting and your request was to come in and have what I think was defined as informal conversation with the school district, really about how the school was operating and all kinds of other things in our review comments, those maybe with dress, pedestrian traffic and things that were happening on this block. We thought that the best way to do that would be, and then also in the interest of time this evening, seeing that there's snowflakes outside, is to provide you with a straight presentation of everything that we can drop on you, if you will. And if it pleases you, we would run through all of that and if you would take notes as we go and start and come at the end with questions, that might be the most expedient way to go. So I apologize for taking the initiative that way, but if that sounded like a reasonable way to attack it, we would go right into.
No, I think, I think that's very, very appropriate. Because the previous presentation you done was fantastic. When we, when we had the informal discussions.
Perform now.
And so, yeah, I, I. And then we'll make sure that we'll get to copy of this PowerPoint presentation, so you can take a look at.
Thank you.
Sounds, that sounds great to us. It's only one hundred and eighty-five slides, so we should be able to get through very quickly. But we ask you to help us import the next slide. You don't all have a speaking role, Wanda's gonna start us off here. I'm gonna lead through the rest of it. Our team, if they see anything, they would, would chime in. I'm gonna go rather quickly and try to lay the fact in front of you this evening and hopefully her mobile fingers to take notes and have comments at the end, and we can always go back, knowing that the fantastic project from all great samples, you know you want to get to that. If you want to get, see if you understand. That's the biggest problem.
Jamie, I have three slides. Just before we started, I wanted to acknowledge, see here are a fraction of much more than the students have been working on the project. We can see a lot of the effort and thought into what we need for the height. And what you see here is basically our rationale for what it is that we're trying to populate with this little town. The high school already has, living in the city and obviously we do. Our high school is a campus model, we have a main high school campus and then we have satellite campus. This particular building is going to be an additional satellite for the high school. It's designed to house the possibilities that will challenge the thousands. We are looking to build this for all reasons. One of the obvious reasons is the overall enrollment, we have a very large enrollment after the whole campus. Whenever we have the opportunity to forward the role on the campus, that's a benefit to students as well as the overall program at the high school. So that is one of our goals, this particular building. The other one, and I think the bigger idea, is looking at how we can re-envision our overall program at the high school, re-envisioning the campus model. Right now, our satellite campuses, which are at Cityline, Thomas Ford and at Glenn's side. Right now, those are credit rebuilds, meaning that students who are attending students who are applying to their students. Who failed major courses and things like that, and who need extra support and ahead and get back on track. We've been looking at that model and thinking about should we base from a deficit perspective of really clearing students who are quote unquote failing by school and shifting that more to how do we engage kids in higher level thinking, more specialized program? So we've been thinking about taking those campuses and turning them into what we call the career path. And looking at the different career opportunities that exist within our community and using those campuses to create specialized programming. Where kids can, for example, attend an academy like this one, which is STEM, Science and Technology Engineering now. Or they can go to a public service event. They could go to an academy on Health Science. So we're looking at getting away from that more deficit perspective and looking more at how do we bring major students from more creative specialized program? So this particular building would be one of several satellites that would help us maintain that goal. In addition, we're also looking at creating additional options for high school students who don't live in that large, tiny environment and would be better students in smaller, larger environments, so that they can build a sense of community and better relationships with their peers and their staff. We're also looking at trying to discourage families who are unaccompanied at large environment from asking for virtual instruction. Because we found within the pandemic, kids don't learn well in the virtual environments. So we want parents to have other opportunities to request specialized, small, learning. Next slide. This slide, I'm not going to read this slide to you, but when we presented our ideas to the board, we had given them the enrollment data as of June fourteenth, which was one of our reporting needs at the end of last whole year. And just to provide some context in terms of the size and numbers of kids who are actually visiting our buildings. This slide just summarized that for you. I can tell you that our enrollment has gone up slightly since this was last presented to our board. We do want to hit on the fact that out of the field camps in each one of those buildings can house just under about three hundred kids. The Glenn's side campus was closed temporarily, first of all, because we had construction, things like that going on, and we needed to make space available for elements. But then also, we had to relocate staff so that we could complete our staff of high school. Had some struggles with staffing towards the end of last year, middle of last year, ended up deciding to close the one side, wanting to take that staff to go make a position at the high school. So at this time, the staff from one side are K A A, are still working to fill positions of at the high school, so we've not reopened that building yet. It is our plan to go back to one side and reopen that once we leveled out our staff. Yeah, along to the next slide. And just to give you a rough idea of the types of programs that we're looking to start, right? High school already has built three minutes course of studies for different career pathways. We're looking to enhance the programming that we offer. We have a pathway for arts and music, and I don't know if you are aware, but our arts and music students up at the high school are pretty amazing kids. Our choral program, our theater program is outstanding top program. Trying to expand that pathway. We're also looking at the business end of things and trying to help kids learn entrepreneurship, so that they can hopefully someday be successful. And work within both the business and the board community. We also have very popular pathway entrance to public service, including areas like law enforcement, education, CMT, civic engagement, things like that. So that's another pathway you're developing. And then finally, the STEM Health Services. When we survey our students, the most popular career pathway among students is focused on that STEM and health services pathway. This particular building, I want to be starting to envision what it'd be. It's necessary because to really put that, that science and technology engineering will not need specialized spaces. Spaces that our earth building can't provide. So if you're looking to go into engineering, you're going to use specialized lab space with specialized equipment that we won't be able to sustain in our regular building. That's why we're so excited about building this particular building and having that customized to let itself to that STEM path. Jamie, I believe you can pick up next?
So that's the groundwork that opened the design and bookkeeping for the new high school app. And I'll go rather quickly through the next few slides, what we tried to do is bullet point some of the things that got in our review letter that we discussed at the other planning mission meeting. And provide simply a set of bullets that would generate probably questions. You, so let me, let me go through this, there might be some things you know and don't know. First, it should be clear that the project is partially federally funded. And there's a timeline on that. And so our schedule is rather aggressive and we're looking at a timeline that requires that federal funding to be spent by twenty. So that's one of the urgencies that the school district has to take advantage of the funding that's available. Provided by events. We're at roughly a hundred and forty-one thousand square feet on four floors of academic space that is above a parking garage. Our garage parking presently accommodates sixty-seven spaces that are specifically for staff use. And we have a surface lot with eighty-four spaces for visitors and staff. Students, visitors. The ground floor has the administrative suite, administrative offices also located on each floor of the building. The STEM curriculum includes a media center, gymnasium, commons area, presentations, kitchen, cafeteria, laboratories, classrooms, music space. We also have a youth support department as a part of the building and common restroom support spaces. Next slide. And so I, I know that you recognize that we're converting formatting on the screen is a little different, but for converting and abandoning this industrial site to something that would be very useful and a benefit we feel for the. It's been unoccupied for a great period of time, hazardous materials plague the site, vagrancy, trash, infestation. That was previously heavily trafficked at the outlet center. But now we have poor security and lighting and really it's become a neighborhood eyesore, especially in the condition bricks and beats on it. Convert that on the next slide to a valuable community asset that has an added addition of parking spaces for the neighborhood, improved site security, improved sight lines and added landscaping. Limited traffic congestion, in our opinion, urban sidewalk improvements and overall a neighborhood enhancement. So go to the next slide. Just some information on the proposed operation of the new academy. We're looking at between sixty-five and eighty-five staff and support personnel, depending on the student population of seven, seven fifty to a thousand. It would have the same operating hours as the current high school. And the building roughly opens thirty minutes ahead of the start of class, so that's usually seven, seven oh five, I think, in the morning. Wanted to make the point that there is no exchange of students from the high school during the day. With the exception of students who'd be walking up to the high school for extra curriculums on campus. This is not something that there's crossing or transportation or walking between the two buildings during the day, except that. Also, limited summer program participation is envisioned at this point of time. And that would possibly be consolidated up at the high school for staffing and operations efficiency. So don't see a whole lot of summer activity in the building. And we have to see over the course of the next three years before the building is built, how that, how that plays out. And as you've heard, staffing is a concern across the district. Very limited after-school programming at this building would be pretty much shut down at the end of the day, outside of club activities and things of that nature after school. All the extra curriculums, the athletics are part of the high school. We have practice in the gym, yes, but this is not the vision to have big athletic events, we don't have the seating capacity in the gym for big athletic events. And, and then there's also a possibility of an outdoor classroom space up on the third floor, essentially top space. We're considering it as a bid alternate at this point. And that way we can have some outdoor activity. It could be in a secure area, confined area. So it's like not allowed, a lot of activity outside. If we go to the, the next slide, this slide is one of the site images that is a part of our hand development session. It's been updated with some queuing information, I'll speak to that in a moment. But the queuing of cars is shown and the locations of buses are shown on this diagram. And up in the upper left-hand column, this is really for Jerome, the total street parking space count is listed. As I said, because of the surface lot, we have a net amount of spaces around the site, even though we're probably really taking spaces that are on parks. On the school side of the building, for obvious reasons, the champagne entrance, buses, kitchen delivery, et cetera. And if you don't mind, we could leave that to Jerome and the plan development view, if there's any particulars with respect to parking. I know this city is working already, already on the count and the fee and how that works. So hopefully tonight is not the night to fail into parking space counts. The next slide is just an enlarged view of that site. And the only point that I wanted to make here is that we provided for bus access to the school building off the city streets. And we've also provided in that parking lot, a minimum of twenty-five bars due for parent drop-off and we can also do a circuitous route to that parking lot, where we could get as many as forty parent cars actually in the lot. But if cars back up, they would back up on the Moss Street in the morning and the afternoon. There's probably not much getting away from that, and I'll speak to that in, in a moment. But if we need to come back and take a look at the site plan as a part of our discussions, I mean, yeah, absolutely. On the next slide is simply the ground floor level, which is the parking garage, which has its own entrance, it could be a secure entrance. It would be a key card style entrance with a pull-down door. That parking garage would be closed and secure in the evenings and in the weekends, it's just for staff parking. And also in this area is storage off of garage, which is used for maintenance equipment, snow removal equipment, et cetera. And also our emergency generator, the building is in that storage area, our emergency generator is outside, we don't have the nuisance of outside emergency generator, but also testing on a regular basis, so that's really what the parking garage. So. Back to bullet points. The points that we wanted to make is that the majority of students already walk to the high school, and they'll also walk to the academy. The vast majority of students walk to the high school. Sixteen buses serve the present high school, in addition to some special education, small buses and vans. And right now, we estimate that no more than five of those buses would be diverted to serve the academy. Their arrival time would be staggered, so we don't envision all of us arriving at the exact same time and causing congestion. As I mentioned, the pull-off space for those buses. Parent drop-off. The note there is that you don't have a designated parent drop-off or pickup location at the high school, as we do with all of the other schools in the district. That happens rather fluidly, and again, most of the kids are walking. Here, we're providing queuing space for parents in the service lot for, as I mentioned, between twenty-five and forty cars. And if there's anything more than that, yes, they would queue right now on, on the street. Our bus students would enter on Windsor at the pull-up there. And also through the main entrance, so students would bust, and then the bus drops off on Moss in the, our little pull-on. Could walk to the front of the building and come there. So all of our bus students have two entrances that they fuse. All of our car drop-offs would presumably enter the main entrance where they're dropped off. It's important in the morning, the all students go through a security protocol at, at the high school, and that would happen at these two entrances. So it's limited front and back, they're spread, we think we've got that spread apart appropriately to accommodate people. Walkers can obviously enter at, at both locations. I mentioned the security system. And in the afternoon, we have two additional stair towers in the building that allow students to scream out in the morning. They leave via the front, the Douglas and Windsor exits, but then also the two stair towers that are on. So we have four locations for dismissal here. Again, in an attempt to spread this people's out at the park. Another three D version here on the screen of the building and the appearance, which I think we've talked about at the prior meetings, trying to mimic a little bit of the industrial nature of the site, also respond to both the height and the design of some surrounding residences. Our street trees, our parking lot, here's another example, if you look closely, of how we could provide a certain unitist parent drop-off, we've got it, it's forty cars. So that's a look at the front of the building, this next slide, thank you, I'm sorry. Just a little closer look as to how cars would enter off of Moss in the morning, afternoon. Depositing children at the, at the front door. We've got extra wide sidewalks, I think we're well beyond what's required by the city, we're trying to keep them at least eight feet in depth. And certainly at the corners of the building, we have, we feel we have adequate space for students and everyone to get around in a, in that crazy fifteen to half hour time frame. The next slide, I think, shows a view looking down from Windsor, and you can see here the entrance with the parking garage. The kind of the Windsor and students get Windsor and Ninth Street side, and then the pull-up, the buses. And there'll be a covered ramp at that location inside of the sidewalk that leads to the, the rear entrance of the building. So we feel that there's plenty of room for kids to get in, get out of the elements, supposedly to get into a very large, and adequately populated building. And the last image here is a little closer at that same side here, we're looking from the intersection of Moss and Windsor. Where the bus pull-off is, you see the ramp that leads into the building. And then also the secondary ramp on the left-hand side is the unaccompanied apartment entrance. And this is just another view where you can look down Moss, see our pull-up that will also serve bus delivery, but is also for, where our garbage pickup. We get those vehicles on. We head to the next. Around the site, crosswalks will be maintained, I imagine, as a part of the project. The city of Reading currently provides crossing guards at all schools except the high school. I think our preliminary investigation here suggests that crossing guards will not be necessary at this school. That students should be using the crosswalks out of there, but it's certainly a topic of discussion as far as how kids get this. The curves, as we discussed at the planning permission meeting, are being realigned, sidewalks are being replaced and are in most cases at least eight feet wide, there are no setback variances. The pull-offs I've mentioned at Windsor and Moss. And then we're also working with Med Ed to relocate power utility ports that are on our side of the street. To again eliminate interference, whether it's walkers or buses or cars dropping off, so that we have open sidewalks. And the bar to bus stop, which after all of the special we had, does exist on Ninth Street down there, those doubles would presumably be retained at that, at that location. And that's where we actually have an even wider sidewalk based on our. There was also some discussion at the last meeting about crash data in the neighborhood. And Enda was able to provide us with that information. No one can read the slides from where they sit, but it's interesting to see that there were only a small number of incident incidents in these intersections since, I think it's twenty seventeen. And one of the interesting points is that probably more than seventy-five percent of those incidents occur on weekends and outside of school hours. If you were to head to the next slide, where I think it might be a little more logical for folks that are here. Here's three incidents, I didn't put them all on here. One of them is happening right before midnight, one is happening at night, one is happening, they're all, these, all of these incidents in the past seem to have occurred outside of the clouds. So we do feel from a vehicular standpoint that we're in good shape. The other comment that's been made is to make sure that fire and rescue is happy to be planned. And I know that the rescues have been with the fire marshal, these two agents. And from a fire and rescue standpoint, the comment has continuously been refined with the building. We just want to make sure that the standpipe in the building is close to the distinct hydrant, we can take care of it in our time. But we really don't foresee any issues from fire and rescue serving the building. Police will be part of the upcoming review and also will be part of the review. So we hope to check that box as well. This, this slide shows the main floor with the main entrances. I won't go into great detail, I'll identify that we have one entrance on Windsor, one entrance on the Douglas side that are again, a view of sidewalks and the area of sidewalks and all of those areas that make concerns primarily in corners and also to work. Right-hand side of the screen where the bar to bus stop is, being able to provide ample space at those locations. So for everything that the district has tried to accomplish, if we provide bus entrance, parent drop-off, maximizing the parking. This is a plan that we've worked on since low before the beginning of the year. I think we've got a lot of the concerns addressed. If I go to the next slide. I mentioned public safety, fire and safety drills will be performed once on a monthly basis during this year. I mentioned the emergency generator inside the building, so it doesn't have the nuisance during testing. Per district policy, the building will open early, the event of climate weather, that was a small discussion of planning commission, if we have snow or something like that, it will be opened a little bit earlier, yes. The district, as you know, performs its own trash garbage pickup, that occurs during school hours and not at night. Benefit of immunity. As far as deliveries, I would tell you, but high volume. Milk is actually delivered before school hours, so that it's there for students. Food deliveries will be before ten a.m. and after beginning of the day. So again, not night deliveries that the community. The district performs snow removal, and we'll have some equipment on-site. The important thing here is that snow is removed from the site and not piled on the site. Because we have committed to making parking spaces available to the community, and so they want to be available, snows probably especially. So next. I tossed in one more image of Moss side of the building. Really to show double doors that come out of the stair tower, that would be another dismissal point. This is simply another view of that pull-off. Uh pull off, which is where we access the trash dumpsters. That are on that pull off, so once again, don't have our trash available on Moss. If we keep going here, uh we do commit to making a surface parking lot open to residents, perhaps to the pass type system. Uh to navigate the whole process of making sure that we know which parking in the lot and who's not leaving the lot. The that lot will be uh lighted and will have security cameras in. Uh I mentioned that the garage is limited to staff parking, it'll be secured, we'll have security cameras located on all the sides of this building at all entrances. Uh the building will have code mandated downlights at all exits, there'll also be exterior wall acts that would flank the sidewalks. And limited interior uh like like so uh the aspect of uh safety and security, particularly the night. We think that the building will be a benefit uh to the neighborhood. Um I think we've gone through the floor plans, the interest in time, I don't know that I need to go above the first floor plan, I'm happy to. Um do that, um if we have time this evening, so maybe skip over the floor plans for now. And uh two slides left. Uh just wanted to put something in here regarding the the district's overall plan for all of their buildings. Their planning is continuous, as Wanda said, um as we look ahead and as we forecast uh what's happening demographic. Here in the community habits have for humanity is also looking through the neighborhood uh properties adjacent to the school, some of which have recently. Also been uh torn down, and so we really think that this building is something that starts to trigger that uh redevelopment and uh site in this area. And then on the final slide here, one component and maybe later representative of the districts want to speak to this as far as. Where we're locating a new school is not a redundant area, um but based on on the district's previous studies, it's determined that. Uh this is an area that's quite well suited to attract people and be at need in the community. I can touch on that, so I I I think in previous meetings, there was questions about how we utilize our buildings and. Uh evaluating uh the the demographics from the past, so um. I I've been with the district since twenty fourteen, uh and from that point, uh in early on in twenty fifteen, we hired a public called Proper G I S. Uh they're based out of Ohio, they are a a national firm that has worked with large school districts. One of the largest, uh they were. To evaluate uh the demographics and the overall trend in uh the connected community, so. Uh as we were determining uh what the capacity of our building, we knew a number of our elementary schools were. Were at capacity, excess capacity. Uh and many of our our middle schools were under capacity, so we uh we engaged with Proper G I S to look at the trends of our community. Uh and determine how we can utilize that. Uh through that process, we did uh a great reconfiguration several years ago, we moved our elementary. Previously came by, came for, and then our middle school will be named by five to eight. And I would then move to high school, the greater to high school. And utilize that our intermediate school has an additional middle school, because as we were seeing trends in the moment, there was about. Fourteen hundred students of additional that are moving through uh the the course of the uh program. And that happens, you know, every few years, you're gonna see enrollment quite that passive. System, so by evaluating it on an annual or a semi annual basis, we're able to determine what that trend's gonna be and how it changes. Uh much of the data that it's used for enrollment trends through P D E is only looking at birth rate. But we recognize that there is a significant uh change in migration into the city. And there's a and through the studies, we determine that there's been a leveling of outward migration. So four families are retaining in the city, but they were also having additional prevent, so. When we evaluate the use of our buildings, we knew that we have to bring on additional property uh to utilize. So when you look at the heat map, it's in this slide, really see where the where the condensed area of school age children are. And that northeast quadrant of the city, there's about sixty-eight thousand. And so as we evaluate how we're gonna utilize this and get the opportunity to get a square city block. Uh right in the heart of where we have the most uh the densest area of school age children. Going to be to be able to. And again, those proximity to the high school, certain benefits that allow for us to have that a continuity of programming. The school where they participate in that sports parks. And and different things there, so it it definitely proves that this is very beneficial. Through that process, we continue to look at the boost of our other buildings and where they're located, we evaluated other uh. Satellite campuses that are located at Glen Side, um toward, and the last one is City Line, which uh on the outskirts from Way York, so. We've addressed those areas to ensure that we're not necessarily busing a lot of students across the city. We have our academies that are spread out of the city, so we can dance it off. Uh if we take these uh these studies very seriously, how it's gonna impact not only for our students. Uh as the payment's going, but where do we have the adequate number of staff members? Uh where we could perhaps have conversations with the city, the garden, the Austin Park Program, so the the studies are very beneficial. Wow, so that's a lot of information, the next slide just says discussion, I um greatly appreciate you allowing us to condense. More in yours or items of interest to you? Since I noted hated some things that that Will touched upon last time, we'll uh we'll start, we'll start with those. Uh thank you very much, that actually answered a lot of questions. That I think um that Will had and we'll make sure that he gets a copy of the of presentation. Um because um he's on the phone, so he doesn't have access to a computer. Uh the uh the first question is um. Is the is the district working on a comprehensive traffic policy? Um my mother in law, just to give you an example, my mother in law lives next door to Southwest. Middle School. Uh the other day, when I took her home from the doctor, I had to park two blocks away. Because Chestnut Street was completely parked shut. My mother in law is ninety-one years old. She doesn't like walking. So, um so uh. That particular building does have a problem in that. Getting people to go down Parker Street and then through the through back parking lot is, you know, not. Not really ideal. But there are a number of other schools that have that have this problem where. For half an hour, forty-five minutes in the morning and half an hour, forty-five minutes. In the afternoon, we have these schools completely parked shut and and there's no traffic. Um probably the worst is is Southwest. But I was at Laos Park the other day, it took me ten minutes to get to there. Uh the other day, because nobody wants to, everybody wants to sit out in the middle of the street. And not get over over to the sun. Um so um that was uh. One thing that that Will brought up and I I gave it some thought, they're driving around town.
So I can stop, do you want us to respond?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can tell you that when school starts at eight or five at the elementary schools, we have um. Pushed back the late time to out allow for a larger window of opportunities for kids to get it. So some parents come, they wait out uh seven fifty-five and and wait to drop their child off, we've opened doors earlier. And we have allowed a long wait time for instructional classes to begin, so that that window. They know we work with the people already diligently on those problem areas, they come out and they help. Well, um and push along the partner partners, we also want to be. Than purchasing more land around and building areas where parents pay for it.
And we 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 are able to do that, we have quarterly meetings for the city. Here, uh and and on the end of it is uh the police chief. I think that over the last several years, we've seen an increase in communication between um this one district and the city, and that certainly has proved that we're able to share those. Uh in addition to that, I think the fact that crossing guards uh program that has uh. Uh improved over the last year and as we talked about, there were uh there's fifty-four, fifty-eight different uh corners. Uh which are identified in the crossing guards, there's fifty-four of those additions are built. And so having that additional uh and they're they're they work for the city of Reading, uh and they're managed by Reading Police Department. So that is a a communication for the police to have an understanding of what is happening. Uh at the school and in the intersection and on those streets, so we're hoping that that program will provide that feedback back. Uh next question is two thirty-eight North Twelfth Street, do you still own that though? Across the street from Central Middle School, used to be an office building. Yes, yes, that is uh our ESL World Center. Hey, and I drove past it, looks like it's worded up. So the garage, the garage, yes, that's our. Okay, the building next to the garage, that's on the corner of Twelve and. Uh that's the product, that's the that's the the. Yeah, we don't know that, so that building was uh acquired by Brado during the destruction of. R- Reading Community High School, now Central School, that is still, that is owned, my understanding, still owned by Brado and I believe it's up. Okay, because I drove past it the other day. The. Administration's going to make a big push. To start putting boarded up buildings on their blacklist. It's gonna be like two hundred and thirty of them added, and that's probably what I just wanted to point out, that if you still own that building. Yeah, but there's a good chance it's gonna be marked. We don't know any of that. Yeah, so, okay, that that's a great, um. At the. At the STEM High School, is there going to be um is there going to be Penn Dot signage for um the fifteen mile per hour zone? And extra crossing lights and all of that good stuff? So we are, we are currently working with Public Works to evaluate uh the proper signage at all of our schools. Uh in particular, most recently, uh we worked uh on on Delon, uh we hope to find traffic in high school. Uh parts that goes through there, uh I think as part of our analysis, working with Penn Dot, we will evaluate each signage. Uh again, that is twenty-five mile road, top sign at every every block, uh so. So we're suing, and again, I know partial speed according to today, that would be, I don't know, give it a go about that future, but. Uh if it's required under the code to have the proper sign. I I'm pretty sure that's a Penn Dot determination, but hopefully you don't have to go through it. The reason I point this out is when I. Down the street. At their new Marion Fire Station. The signage, the Penn Dot signage there took four months to approve. Yeah, and actually I didn't undercode any or have any full signage. Yeah, so I just wanted to point that out that because the developer of the fire station was like, oh, we'll have this in thirty days. And four months later, you know, we're like, where are you guys? So. I just, I just wanted to to point that out, that we seem, we seem to be having a problem. You know, trying to get that kind of stuff. Our our supply here was able to get uh actually a report in two days, so maybe we'll have an in on on that. One other note, uh we have our M T D F. Provides that. Yeah, I've got, I've got a letter out, yeah. I just wanna jump back to what I was discussing, but I've been on crash down. In addition to that. And you said you had quarterly meetings with the police department. Um what we can do is that just first look this video, make sure it's secured from the Penn Dot website or. However you think it. And is this, is there anything else in addition to this that you have on file? Or like this, just, we're we're not asking the police chief or or anyone to. Make any statements or provide a letter, we just wanted to make sure that they were provided the office. Provided comments uh with regards to site accessibility, that's our police department, yeah, okay. This information's nice and you can provide that to the department, so. In addition to this, uh now if you have anything other concerns that. You may want to share. And if they do, then they did this, they did this. I guess it's uh. Use of a big insight of uh variables. I just wanna make sure that the crosswalks are are operating fine now and uh so when you go to use them, they're. More, it's gonna be more than that, it's, you know, on the street walking. Uh and utilizing the crosswalks, so the crosswalks were working properly for whatever reason. Maybe it's something that's on other side of the street, uh we want to actually be addressed. But not necessarily on your side. Anyway, anyway. Right now, Barta has two, I think it's two buses that are. That um take uh students to the high school. Will you be coordinating with with Barta on? On that. They don't necessarily have to add buses, but like, you know, are you gonna drop the kids off at the STEM first and then go up the hill to the high school and. You know, that that type of coordination.
So we currently use their current routes and and that they have, they have not altered anywhere else. Or else in the last couple of years, as we were trying to gather more buses, block drivers and train, utilize. So I we would just.
It's like I said, I don't, I don't foresee a reason to add another bus. Plus trying to sort out the STEM kids from the other high school kids would be a disaster. Um the other thing I wanted to mention is that, yes, there is a crossing guard at the high school. Uh he's at uh Thirteenth and Holy. Thank God. Because I'm tired of kids walking in front of my car when I'm trying to get into the intersection with light turns. I I've almost, I've almost run over six kids so far.
So I believe that would be in green is not necessarily in high school, or we can check.
The guys at, the guys at Thirteenth and Old. Cause there is one at Thirteenth and Green, there's now one at Thirteenth and Old. But like I said, thank God, he, that guy does a great job. Um because like I said, I'm tired, I'm tired of kids walking, thinking that just because the light. You know, they ignore that the light changes and then they would walk right out in front of the cars. Um and like I said, I I I've actually seen one kid did did get hit this. Uh early in the school year. Um and that's. And I don't think we're gonna really change high school kids. Demeanor very quickly, but when it relates to that, but if there's somebody there in the nice. Green coat, bright green coat that has the stop sign, like this gentleman on Holy Street. You know, he he's doing a great job, so you may want to consider crossing guards at the at the STEM High School. Okay, anything from you now?
No, I I think that we have very good petition, it's a very good project. I like the idea that you uh allow the president's partner. And giving a end of score, it's only gonna do that. And giving, uh, a end of score, it's only gonna do that, uh, for some. So hard for.
For the residents?
For residents?
I, I think the answer is to be determined in the consistent policy before we done other places. That's a policy that always.
Yeah, we have a current school policy that the residents can come home at certain times as well as in the summer and weekends. So as long as they're off great times, and they'll, they just receive their vacation and like the health. Not there, it's pointing, pointing with other ones.
I think that's, and have I the idea we have, uh, so, I told the kids, uh, we told the school.
We feel. Yeah. We have to, we have to teach, we have to teach the parents to try them.
That is. I think it's, uh, so.
This is Danny from Schrader Ridge, came a little late, representing the architectural firm Schrader, who is in charge of the project.
Okay, well. Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, first of all, for having this workshop. And I really wanna thank the Reddy School District for that presentation. Fortunately, the audio is not very good tonight, uh, so I'm looking forward to watching that, uh, PowerPoint. Uh, even some of the answers to some of the questions of our colleagues I couldn't quite hear, so I have to compare notes with afterwards. Uh, so pardon me if there's something I've missed, I'm gonna try not to ask much that's already been covered. Mostly I'd covered what I wanted last time, but there are a few loose ends. But again, that was a, from what I gathered, it was a much more thorough explanation. It was very helpful. I think it answered the questions that you raised, Mr. Chairman. I know some of the public have, have raised these questions. And as I've noted, it's very difficult to do planning, and I've said the same to the district before, and also to Albright, it's part of the reason we're having, them on the agenda tonight. It's very hard to do planning on a piecemeal basis with, with, uh, an applicant that has multiple parcels and where there's interplay in terms of traffic and pedestrians and parking and that, a- as one property affects the other. Uh, so it, it's really helpful to have that, um. I was hoping to spark dialogue between the city and the district. Uh, it sounds like there, there, you're having those meetings, the quarterly meetings, that's good. I wasn't sure. That's been an on and off practice over the years. I'm glad to hear that's on. Uh, really, as, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the, the, the dialogue be about the traffic in general. And yes, we, obviously we're focused on this plan, but to take the opportunity, uh, as I said, I was glad that the district, uh, followed, uh, the suggestion I had made at one of those meetings with the city and the school district to stagger the, uh, uh, start and, uh, dismissal times. Uh, I think that's been helpful, uh, but there's still some matters, uh, obviously, uh, the, uh, the crossing guards is a city, a city matter. There's still some matters to discuss and also about some of the parcels and the uses thereof, uh, that were not mentioned here. I just like to have that dialogue, you know, uh, you, I encourage that to continue on both sides. Uh, I trust here that, you know, I have a lot of confidence in our public works department. As I did when I was on the school board side, we had to work together on projects, that they'll work out some of these details, uh, as well, of course, with our, our terrific planning, uh, planning staff as well. Um, so I, I heard that the students will be, not be at the school, sorry, will, will be at the school basically all day if I, if I understand correctly, and not be, uh, going up to the high school during the day. Uh, are any of these students, I just was wondering, considering that it's science, technology, engineering, mathematics, will any of them, do you imagine, uh, be going to the Career and Technology Center, or, you know, properly known as the vote tank?
It was our goal to try to keep the students who are at this, this scene at the main campus of the high school so that we would not have to introduce that whole element of busing to this particular building. So, um, our expectation is that this STEM Academy is going to offer STEM, uh, STEM opportunities that will not take kids away from this. We want kids to continue to go to the CTC and participate in their programming, and we'd like to ideally be able to offer programs that are not typically offered at, uh, so our average CTC people will be staying at the high school and getting their, uh, their other half of their day at the high school main campus.
Yeah, I'm not sure I got, I couldn't quite hear everything, sorry, but, okay, I don't wanna, I don't wanna. Largely no?
I, I will let you, let you know what the, the, the full answer.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna pick up. Yeah.
Yeah, there will be no midday buses at, at the, at the STEM school.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, right. Yeah, I don't wanna drag it out by having to get, get a relay of every answer. Thank you, I appreciate the answer. Um, the reason I, I really just wanted to make a note, I didn't, I did not insist on a traffic study at expert expenses because I think we know what the issues are here. And like I said, I trust that we can work these, work these out. Uh, I just think that would have been, you know, a waste of tax dollars. I think it mostly surrounds, uh, the picking up and dropping off is a particular concern. We've addressed the busing, both the public transportation and the school buses. Um, uh, that was good to hear figures on how many cars you expect to queue, the twenty-five with the capacity up to forty, if I heard correctly. Um, because it was hard to tell, uh, I don't know if you've done any survey of the parents and guardians of these prospective students to see what, you know, what you're gonna expect. Um, I understand, of course, some people will be walking that live, you know, that lives a bit closer for some people than where they are going now at the high school. There's a trade-off, of course. Um, it's a good point that there isn't, that there isn't the drop-off at the, um, high school. I mean, there is for the buses. But the difference at the high school, and I had to navigate through it again today, at dismissal time is Thirteenth Street can accommodate, not that we encourage it, it can accommodate double parking on both sides. We can still get through north and southbound at the same time, whereas I'm concerned about cars queuing on Mo Street, which is completely different. Uh, there's really, it's only one lane and, uh, if there are cars in there, it would be, it would be a bottleneck. Um, that was a good point about the, um, the district has its own times for, uh, its own, you know, meal delivery, trash recycling. I was not concerned about that, but it's good that you mentioned it. I really was more concerned about what happens when the city has the, the trash and the recycling pickup on Mo Street, uh, in particular, and even someone on Woods or Douglas, uh, because it really, it really blocked the whole, it'll block the whole thing. Um, and like I said, street sweeping and that, whatever coordination between Public Works and the district there can be, I think is the better. Um, so that was, you know, I think pretty much covers the, covers the traffic concerns that I had. I know Public Works is following up with Barta because of that bus stop, on the possibility of moving it. Uh, I don't know if you're aware of this, Mr. Chairman, there was some follow-up on this. And if they do, it could accommodate a couple more parking spaces. I think the district has, you know, what they're proposing with the parking here is ample. I do appreciate that they're accommodating the neighborhood here as elsewhere. Um, it sounds like there was some, uh, accommodation of the students. The, the reason I brought that concern up is because, of course, under municipal planning code, we're supposed to be concerned primarily about health and safety. So I brought the question up about, you know, where, you know, would the students be allowed into the school, especially when it isn't good weather, which quite frankly is the whole winter. And, uh, and that's why I raised it, and so I wasn't sure what the plan was. And then I thought, well, if they're not gonna be allowed onto the grounds, uh, then I was concerned they'd be, uh, congregating on the sidewalks. One of our primary concerns as Planning Commission is to promote walkability. So I thought that would be impeded. I did not pick up on the technical change from the sketch plan to the, uh, preliminary plan that the sidewalks have been widened. So I do appreciate that. That is, that's really good for walkability. Um, that's, that's something we ever require of developers, but we're, we're glad to hear that. And really also because it effectively does establish some degree of a setback further, which is good. Setbacks are good as a zoning matter, but I think it's a good, a good, uh, thing to have because it does mitigate noise to some degree, as well as allows for more sunlight. I'm particularly thinking about on that Mo Street side, which is narrow, you know, towards the mountain. There's not gonna be a lot of direct sunlight there. So the further back, the better. I was glad about that. Uh, I wasn't quite sure. I think I heard that the building's gonna be opened up early, uh, if, if I understood correctly. So I was, uh, if, if, if that's the case, I'm glad to hear that. I appreciate it. Um, I was, you know, we were told there was breakfast available at the high school, yes?
Uh, just, just to clear one, one thing up, what was pointed out is that, is that they've added some, um, they've added some overhang areas where a lot of, a lot of kids, if they do get there really early, they will be out of the element.
Good, good, because I looked at the renderings, Mr. Chairman, I know, you know, we discussed this. Uh, I looked at the renderings that were in the media and I was looking for overhangs and eaves and I didn't see much. It's hard to tell. So that's been the case, that, that, that's appreciated, good, yeah.
Yeah, and you'll, you'll see that on the presentation when we get that to you.
Good, I look forward to seeing that. Terrific. Um, mostly that covers what, you know, the loose ends from before. One question, again, going by, going by high school, I was reminded of something else. Well, let me just, let me just, uh, finish one thing on the traffic I wanted to say. Ultimately, of course, the traffic, all, all we can do from the planning perspective is to, is to, uh, working with Public Works, is to have the proper signage and the markings, and of course, we talked about the crossing guards and that. But ultimately it comes down to enforcement on the city's end, of course, you know. So the fact that, you know, Public Works brought up, brought up the, the concern about the traffic and you and I have, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, our, our audience here isn't only the, the district, it's, it's for the city to do whatever it can, working with the district, working together on what makes the most sense. I just wanted to note that. And that's always the case with our projects. I mean, all we can do is, you know, put the right markings and signage out. Uh, that's, that's our responsibility. Um, so, okay. Uh, like you said, about, you know, people's behavior is, you know, we, we can only do so much in that regard, but we try. Uh, just, uh, along, along those lines, I had to go by the high school recently when it was not arrival or dismissal time, and I was reminded of the litter. I was just, I don't think that the street sweeping, uh, program the city offers is extended to side streets around schools, if anybody knows that, or if that's, you know, something could be brought up. I don't know if that's the case normally, what their protocol is, but go ahead, if somebody could answer that, it's great, yeah.
I can give you some details on that, because certain half-streets are only done certain times of the year. But I can give you the, um, I'll have, um, I'll have Tim give you the schedule.
Great, uh, but I, I, I know there is a schedule. I've seen that on the website. Uh, we had, we had, we had leaf pickup here, you know, for example, there's leaf, and then there's the street sweeping is of course the main one. Uh, but I just was wondering if they have any thought about expanding that, and if not, I wasn't expecting that they would, because there's only so much manpower. I, I'm gonna leave it to the, our planning staff, uh, to work out. I haven't seen anything mentioned again. Pardon me if this was brought up at one of the meetings and I couldn't hear it, about the adequacy of trash receptacles. Um, that's always come up with schools. Uh, so that's, I mean, I don't, I mean, it, I don't think we have a, a, we don't have a specific zoning, uh, ordinance for, uh, around schools. It's just a matter of what, what we think is prudent. So I, I'm gonna leave that for the staff to work out. I think that mostly covers, covers it again, because I think a lot was said in that presentation. I, I have one question, I'm just gonna, uh, just, just a suggestion, there's no pressure on this. Um, you know, I'm a historian, this was a historic property, of course. Uh, uh, not that it was an architectural gem, but people remark about, and they remember the hardwood floors and that. And of course, part of it had collapsed, but part of it was, you know, going to be reused and that. And now you have, and, and really it was a, it was a model, really became a model with the outlets here of repurposing old buildings. Okay, which is something, of course, I favor. We tend to, you know, promote that sort of thing. Uh, and, uh, of course, it became a mecca for tourists and that. A- and now you have a big pile of bricks, as was mentioned, which I've seen that. Um, uh, I don't wanna add any expense or anything. I just was wondering, is it's a common practice, we did this with the Millmind School to some degree, if there was any consideration. I know, I appreciated the architect's design that has the brick and there's some homage paid to the, the previous, uh, industrial building and, and that appearance. Uh, but was there any thought to using any of those bricks, if not structurally, but perhaps as a design element here or there, and the exterior, interior, anything like that? Again, I don't wanna cause any more expense or delays, but just the thought, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up.
Okay, um, yeah, uh, well, to repeat, it's, it, as far as the existing brick that exists, I, I don't, I don't think that's really, uh, able to be reused. A lot of it's crushed, played bricks, it's not really strong, it's not, however, if you, if you walk the site, especially from, uh, south part along Ninth Street, you'll see a lot of brown, uh, foundation stone that actually gets taller as you approach winter. Uh, there is some thought to be able to reuse some of that for, uh, a short seapole around the planting area along Ninth. Uh, the kind of flanks, uh, stairs on, on Ninth Street, side blocks, the main entrance, hard block, the ADA room, uh, allows for some improvement seated, and also imposes, uh, a landscape there. Um, and certainly pays, uh, a respect to what was there. There may be some other opportunities to use similarly as, as, as I pictured, so seapoles, uh, yeah, not for that detail. Yeah, that's, uh, that was one I, yeah, so.
Thank you, thank you, Rizzi, I really appreciate, I, I, I caught most of that, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate that very much. That, that's all I have on this, on this part. Thank, again, I, I thank, uh, uh, not just you, Mr. Chairman, for having this workshop so we could go into more depth, uh, but again, the district for that, that thorough, uh, overview of, of their, their plan, their vision, and, uh, what they're intending to do. I look forward to studying that. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks, Will. Uh, Dan, uh, Mr. DiCarlo, are, are you available? I think you stepped out for the moment. Are you there, Frank? I see he's muted. But, uh, uh, hearing nothing from our two new members, oh.
He's on the phone.
Oh, Frank's on the phone, yeah, okay. Okay, and yes, Frank, we'll make sure that you get a copy of the presentation. And, uh, I believe we covered everything. If, if not, um, I will have the members submit, um, submit any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I switched from my computer to my phone, so there was some lapse time there. Um, I'll, I'll get that fixed for the next meeting. So I just wanna say, you know, obviously this is my first, uh, meeting as a member of the Planning Commission. So this was my first presentation that I've seen, being a Planning Commission member. I've attended meetings before, but in a different capacity. So I do wanna say this, the Redding School District, I found it to be very, very informative. So, um, I'm familiar a little bit of the project, I'm familiar with the location, so, but, uh, this additional information, um, even though I couldn't see the PowerPoint, I was able to visualize a lot of things that were being said, uh, just because I know the area near the Ninth and Douglas area there. So, um, so I found it to be very, very helpful, very informative as we move forward and, you know, as we review further plans, but, uh, um, so, uh, it went, it went well.
Hey, thanks, Frank.
Yes. Thank you.
Um, let me see, there was one. Oh, the other thing I just wanted to say is good luck getting those utility poles moved. We tried to get one moved about ten years ago and, and Medit refused.
We actually, uh, we actually, uh, we. They're getting it somewhere. Of course, we have a slight change of, uh, in the entrance point on Long Windsor, so that's, trying to get bigger than that. Really is the old way that is, smooth method, a lot of poles that is on site. Or be slightly relocated, it's bigger than.
And I think to add to that, one of those, there, there's not a street light on that, uh, section of Windsor Street. So the down lighting from our building, going against the, they, security.
Yeah, you're very good. Schedule. Okay, so we're at the preliminaries, the preliminary plan was approved with conditions, so we're now into the final plan split. Uh, our review will come out on November twenty first. Um, with the holidays, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage with getting further input from other departments. Uh, but our planning mission does meet on November twenty second. Um, what I would suggest is that we just go with a, a planned interim plan, uh, at that point, just to make sure that all the departments that are necessary, especially Public Works, uh, at this stage, has the opportunity to review it. And, uh, this would also give the applicant the opportunity to revise anything by December twelfth. Uh, so our, our meeting for, in December gets moved up a week. Uh, so our, our actual meeting is on December twentieth. Uh, so I would suggest we'll be in a stronger position, especially with adding two new planning commission members, uh, to, uh, to consider all everything that's been submitted today. Uh, I, I think we'll be in a better position on December twentieth for approval. No, we'll some. I, I think, we, we, I do have reference.
So, I, I understand. So the December planning commission gave me the schedule for December twentieth. Uh, yes, the holidays, so Saturday night still?
No, we'll, we'll give you, we'll give you until December twelfth.
Okay.
On that, since we're, since we're like very close. Yeah. To the approval. I just gotta make sure that all the departments are, you know, gonna make sure Public Works, uh, fire up UGS. Uh, building a trade list yet, but I'll show them what we've got so far. But, and I also give you the opportunity to schedule meeting for the department. And things like this to cover up some new sets. I have one stop for building doors.
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, yeah? Hopefully we got the. Well, yeah, what, uh, fire rescue, we should be there as well.
Yeah, they should be.
I don't know if Mr. Crawl is on?
No, he's not.
Can anybody assist with getting, uh, Public Works to respond to our Santeran plans that's been proposed? I have heard zero. I don't, pretty please, minutes. Only on late July.
Yeah. Yeah, that was an internal thing. I wish, I wish, I wish I could call Dad and go, hey, get this done, but I, I, I'm not in a position to do that. So we will. Yeah. Yeah, we, for some reason, for some reason, we're, we're, we're having problems getting, getting, from what I understand, we're having problems getting, getting stuff back from the, from the state too. So, um, so I'm not exactly for what the holdup is there.
Uh, yeah, but it's utility.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking December twentieth would be a much better position, and that would be the reasons. Make sure that all departments have the opportunity. Obviously, it's an approval. Okay. Yeah, well, yeah, this won't be, yeah, this won't be like, um, Citadel took almost a year. But a lot of that had to go, had to, a lot of that problem was that, um, they had to send robots through defining of all the connect, all the utility connections, because none of them were on the plans, uh, that were handed over by the hospital. And that took, that took about six months. Luckily, since you're starting from scratch, you're not gonna have that problem. You should be able to find all your utility connections pretty easy. While we have, while we have the planning, is there gonna be any conflicts with anyone on December twentieth?
Two, I need to say.
No. I, I should be available, Mr. Chairman.
Be here.
Be here?
Yeah. Do you want one?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, very much. I'll say I'm available.
Bill? Will, will you be here on December?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I guess, yeah, I did say, yeah, I should, I should be available. Thank you. Yep.
And Frank?
Yes, I'll, I will be available.
Yeah, great. And, um.
Uh, Daniel?
Yeah, Daniel.
He might.
Yeah, he, he might have stepped out. We'll try to catch him later.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that's an odd day, the fourth Tuesday we usually meet, so this one's gonna be excellent. Yeah. All right. All right. Very good.
Well, thank you.
Uh, explain Albright. Yep. But, uh, thank you for listening, uh, because the presentation that you brought is, is very, very easy. Very helpful. Thanks, very much. Safe travels this evening, everyone. Nope. So. Yeah. All right. Very good.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Next, we have Albright, uh, with the, um, Gingrich Hall Library. Of course, might need to rename that. I don't know if that's in the cards.
Well, officially, uh, the, it has been renamed. It's actually the Students' Success Commons and Library. Uh, we do not have a naming donor at this moment, uh, Mr. Commissioner, uh, and members, but we are in the process of doing that, because obviously we continue to fundraise on this project. But the official name right now is the Albright College. The project name is Albright College Student Success Commons and Library. So with that, um, we have our team tonight, and we have Joe Haran and Joe Montante. They are with Kimmel Bogarrett. They are the project architect. Joe is principal. Joe Montante is the project architect. We also have Christina Crawford and Bob Fritschbaum, uh, they're on as well from Cedarville. Our mechanical electrical plumbing engineer is McHugh Engineering, and Think Green is our landscape architect. Um, and also, uh, Mark Bauer, and he is our structural engineer, with Ruth Bauer. So that is right now the design team. And with that, tonight, I wanna make sure we introduce everybody, present the project to the ones that have not seen this project before. We are extremely excited about it. We had a, a very good zoning mission, or excuse me, submission and meeting about that. Um, Tom and Brandy were very helpful towards us on that. They had a couple of questions about our parking that we will respond to. It was nothing major. There's a couple of questions about ratios, and we'll respond to that. Um, but we have spent a lot of time in the, over the past year of meeting with, uh, everybody from Jeremy Trent with the Fire Company, Fire Marshal, to go over concerns related to, you know, EMS, fire, um, when Tim Crawl was there. You know, we were looking at some of the things with Tim, he's still there. Uh, we're looking at sewer modules, et cetera. So I, I feel that we have done a lot of due diligence previous to this, and we appreciate that to try to make sure that we have our submission package as clean as possible presenting to you guys. And so with that, I wanna, if there's no other questions, uh, I wanna hand it over to Joe and let Joe walk us through and do this presentation. And everybody was talking about wanting to have a copy of the presentation, and we'll, absolutely. We will email it to Jerome Brandy, whoever we need to, just to make sure that everybody has that, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, just, just email it to Brandy.
Got it. Okay, so we'll do that. So.
Jerome gets enough.
With, with no further ado, I'm gonna let, uh, Joe, um, take it over from this point. We'll answer questions as we walk through anyone's, any questions that anybody has, and we appreciate your time.
Thanks, Brad. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Haran, as Brad said, with Kimmel Bogarrett Architects. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present this exciting project, uh, for Albright and, uh, for the City of Reading. We think, uh, the opportunity to transform this, uh, building, which has, um, been sitting vacant now for several years, uh, into a new hub of activity and learning for Albright is gonna be really exciting. So, uh, with that said, we'll, uh, we'll kind of run through an overview. Feel free to, uh, interrupt, ask questions, um, and make this, uh, you know, dialogue as, as we go through, so. Next slide. Um, so the project, uh, location, for those who are not familiar with it, it is right off of Thirteen Street and Exeter. Um, it is that yellow, uh, yellow block there you see in the middle, um, just that opposite the athletic facility, uh, there at the corner. Uh, so what you see here is the proposed landscape plan. Uh, the building, the original building footprint is the, the square that you see here highlighted by, uh, our cursor. Um, the building, i- if you'll see in some photos here, um, of the existing conditions, is a very, you know, it's a, a nineteen sixty sort of brutalist building. It's very inwardly focused, um, not a lot of daylight, uh, it's just, um, you know, it's, it's really sort of past its lifetime. But what we found is that, uh, the structure of the building itself, you know, the superstructure, the column, the floor slabs, uh, it's in very good condition. So what we're proposing to do is to reskin the entire exterior of the building and then build two small additions, which you see there on the left and right, with Thirteen Street, uh, being on the left-hand side, uh, striped in red there, uh, to really kind of, uh, transform the building, open it up, uh, really make it sort of a, you know, beacon on campus. And, uh, as you're coming up Thirteen Street, be, you know, sort of this beacon that sits up on the hill there, uh, as you're coming, you know, up and down, uh, through the city. So as part of the project, uh, we're proposing, you know, all new landscaping, uh, hardscaping, you know, accessibility, ADA accessibility to the building. Uh, we're gonna create, you know, seating plazas, low walls, and, uh, as we, you know, develop that, um, you know, we'll certainly share that with the committee. But you see on the right-hand side, the, the idea of an outdoor classroom with an amphitheater, um, and you'll see some of that in some 3D renderings here. And we've worked, uh, closely with Albright's arborist, as well as the City of Reading's arborist, uh, in talking about the trees and landscaping and the plantings. Right? Next slide. Uh, so what we'll, we'll show you here, um, as we go through, again, as Brad had said, um, this building has really been transformed from what was your traditional library, which, you know, filled with just, you know, books and stacks, to what's gonna be really the, you know, the learning commons. So it's more than just a library, uh, especially in the digital age that we live in. Um, you know, this is a place for students to be, to learn, to study, um, and it also has some really unique, uh, cultural aspects here that we'll, we'll share with you as well. So this is the, uh, the ground floor plan. Thirteen Street would be on your left-hand side. Uh, there's dual entrances, both on the left and right. Uh, there's, uh, the admissions, uh, welcome center will be on the ground floor, uh, anchored in the center there. You see in yellow is a cafe. Uh, and then surrounded, uh, in the, in the purple, light purple are various, uh, student success and learning, uh, job placement, uh, you know, spaces where, um, you know, students will come in on a daily basis, meet with advisors, uh, things of that nature. Uh, we're gonna, you know, provide two new elevators, uh, that will go up and down, uh, in the building as well. And then, um, you know, redo, this is a full gut interior, so it's all new, uh, mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems, fire protection, um, within that whole, within the existing building. All right? Uh, we'll be redeveloping the, uh, lower level with some classrooms and some testing centers, uh, studying group spaces and breakout areas. And then obviously the, uh, area you see in the green, uh, the light gray there, in the lower right-hand corner is existing mechanical, which will remain, uh, with new equipment. All right, so, uh, this is the second floor. So the second floor becomes the, the, uh, the library space itself. Um, you see on the right-hand side there, when you first come in off of, uh, the plaza area, there's gonna be a, you know, a monumental stair, which, uh, will take you right up to the second floor. Uh, it'll be open and, uh, volume area. You will see some interior renderings here in a minute. Um, but what you notice about the library is that we have the stacks along the planned north side, uh, with some seating and reading, uh, reading areas along the windows. But then the remaining of the space is really flexible, uh, movable furniture, uh, areas for students to gather, uh, tables which will break down, um, as well as a large classroom. So the, the learning environment, uh, will be exciting and dynamic. And then on the bottom, south-hand side of the plan, there are support spaces, uh, for offices and administration to support the library and learning. So we'll go up to the, uh, to the third floor. The third floor here, uh, you see on the north side in the light purple is the, uh, Center for Writing Excellence. This is a support space for, uh, students to come, uh, with, to get assistance with writing papers and, uh, applications and things of that nature. Uh, again, flexible learning. You see, you know, various soft seating tables, um, hard tables, just a very diverse kind of, uh, workspace, as well as, uh, you know, offices to support that, um, you know, that facility. There are several classrooms, uh, located on this floor. On the left-hand side there, there's two, two classrooms. And then on the right-hand side, uh, there's a thirty-seat classroom there. Uh, and then the large, uh, light blue area you see in the middle is going to be the, uh, college's conference center. So it's a, um, you know, eighty-seat area, uh, seating area, which will be subdivitable into two spaces with a movable wall. And that space will be used for board meetings and events, uh, things of that nature. And, uh, what you'll see, when we jump up to the next floor, there's gonna be a, uh, an opportunity to use that conference center as a breakout for some of the unique, uh, cultural aspects, uh, that you'll see up on the upper level. And we also have a connection, a stair, that will really connect those two floors and kind of create it, uh, into open. So this is the, this is the top floor. And what's unique about this floor, um, it hosts a, a number of special collections. There will be the Black Cultural Center, uh, which you see there, uh, on the north-hand, north side of the plan, uh, the Holocaust collection that Albright has, as well as the Nolan, uh, collection and Albright Archives. So the opportunity here, um, is to actually have some community engagement, uh, make this a, a space for, uh, folks and students to come visit and see these and experience these, uh, spaces. And then, uh, just really additional support space and administrative spaces that will, um, you know, help assist with research. Uh, the opportunity to come and grab materials and go sit down, uh, study them, classrooms for education that will support those. So, uh, it's a really dynamic, um, you know, space, and it's, it's really unique and interesting in that you don't see, um, you know, many college and university spaces that will have, you know, unique collections like this that will be part of, you know, a student, you know, student sector facility.
So if, if I might add to this, is that i- if you look at, as we've gone through the floor, transitioning through the floors, there's a lot of programming that we have put into this building to support various rationale as to how to develop this building into not only a place that is predominantly for students, faculty and staff, but also for the community as well. And as part of our vision, as Jackie has explained to you guys numerous times, I'm sure, is the whole vision about the innovation corridor that we're trying to put forth, uh, with the city's help and everybody's help and the community, the college heights for Northeast Reading. And so we feel that, as we progress through this design, you're gonna see is that we are really excited about this building. So how it's gonna evolve the community, just our students, and it's gonna create such a, such a place to hang out and enjoy that we're just extremely excited about it. And I'll let Joe go with that, 'cause the next slide is gonna really show that what we call Fondly, uh, that was, was named by Joe, and that is the tyranny of the cube. Or it was either you, Joe, or Martin. I'm not really sure.
I'll give him credit for that.
But a- as you can see, it's, it's a pretty, uh, it's pretty dilapidated and rough. So, you know, we're really looking forward to see, as you see this picture and how it transforms to what we're talking about next, it's gonna be an extremely elegant building.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so this is the, uh, facade that is looking into campus. Um, Thirteen Street would be off on the, uh, right-hand side, uh, in the background there. Uh, you get a sense of that amphitheater, um, in the lower left-hand corner that we were, we were talking about earlier. But, um, we're basically taking that, you know, you can see, sort of get a sense of the original cube, um, as, as Brad had mentioned, and, uh, creating, you know, large openings, uh, you know, glass, uh, creating that atrium space, uh, on the, on the one side. on the, on the one side there, on the east and the west side to really open up the building and, and, you know, you go back to the original photo, you almost can't even get a sense of a single window. Yeah, there's little kind, you know, little tiny slot windows there. You know, not really inviting, not really warm and welcoming. And it doesn't really have a, you know, an institutional feel for what, you know, a campus like Albright, you know, is and, and needs.
Our whole purpose in this design is, again, a little repetitive, is to create a space for students, staff and public, but also create openness, airiness and inviting because this is the key focal central point to our, our campus. And it, Kimmel Bograth, I can't say enough about how they have opened this building up, transitioned to redevelop this building in a manner that is very inviting. And we're, again, extremely excited about it. And I, I can't say enough about it, but again, Joe, sorry to interrupt you. I'll let you keep rolling.
No, no, it's all, all great, great additions there, Brad. So one of the major things that we're looking at doing is, is reskinning the existing building. The, as I mentioned earlier, the building has very good sort of structural bones. But there have been, over the years now, which is why the building has been closed, I think for the last four or five years. There's been issues with the brick facade. The original detailing was not necessarily done properly, things of that nature. So it's really, you know, past its lifetime. So what we're looking at doing is, you know, really peeling the entire facade off that, those precast panels are, they've been spalling and degrading from freeze stall, things of that nature. So we're going to basically strip the building down to its, to its structural, you know, frame. And then re-cladded here with, what you're seeing here is like a stone-like material. You know, to sort of mimic, mimic limestone, lots of aluminum and glass and curtain wall are really sort of the main other materials that you see. And we'll just sort of walk you around the, you know, the exterior of the building as, as we go towards thirteen street. So this is the view looking as though you were coming from the parking lot or from over the athletic center. You see the, you know, sort of again, another seating plaza as you kind of come up to the right-hand side there. There's an ADA accessible ramp. That's kind of tucked behind the, the low wall to the left of those folks sitting in, or walking at the top of steps. Again, it's just a, you know, it's a really dramatic transformation from what was a, a building that was very brutalist to, you know, really just kind of create a warm and welcoming environment to, to Albright's campus. And this is the view looking from thirteen street.
This is thirteen street, kind of from the elementary school looking up at it.
And then just some two D elevations of the building. Again, we're not changing the building height. It's existing, parapic conditions will remain the same. We're just really, you know, reskinning it and re-cladding the exterior. That's a view of the short side. That's the, the campus side. And then here's a few just interior renderings of, you know, what the space will be. This is the entrance when you're coming off of thirteen street. We have a, you know, this is where the admissions welcome center will be, which is on the left-hand side there. You know, nice double-height lobby space, lots of glass that you can kind of look up and see the activity, see up into the library. Get a sense of, you know, what's going on in the spaces around you. This is the cafe, which will be in the center of that ground floor, student commons area. And I think the college is looking at, you know, using Aramark or possibly like a Saks Bees where this could be a student-run facility. Which is really, I think, unique to have students be able to run and do the business operations and things of that nature. There's only a handful of universities and colleges I know that have done that.
Aramark.
Aramark.
Yep.
And then this view here, which I think is the last view we'll have from an interior rendering perspective, is the entrance side atrium coming off of that plaza on the campus, west-eastern side. Where you see the double, these double-height lobby space, there are the monumental stairs that take you up to the library. Again, just a very, you know, open, clean, you know, dynamic space that's going to be flexible and really be a, you know, a nice opportunity for, you know, families and students and everybody visiting Albright to, to enjoy this new facility. And then with that, I want to turn it over to Christina and Bob from Cedarville Engineering to kind of just talk through a little bit on, you know, where we are with the, the land development and, you know, the submission process on that.
I guess, I guess I can start. Joe, if, I guess we can start with this plan. This basically gives you the, the plan view of the building and the proposed associated improvements. You can see along with the outline of the building, the proposed hardscape to would be the, the east and west of the building. To the south of the building, you see kind of a crosshatched T. That is actually going to be a geo grid type of material for fire access. So that will be, you know, that will be something that we kind of implemented into the grass, into the landscaping itself. So.
And let me interrupt you real quick, Mr. Chairman. This is kind of a result of us, Bob and, and the whole team getting together with the fire marshal Jeremy and Trent to come out on the site. And we really appreciate their time to walk through some of the requirements and to figure out the best way to provide fire access to the building on two sides. And this is what we've kind of worked with. It, it again, it was, was agreeable with Jeremy looking at this. Whereas also we have a, a place where the cursor is moving right now to also widen that, make sure that their vehicles meet the required gross vehicle weight to stage trucks in emergency. So Bob and Christina have done a really good job documenting this and working with us and the, and the city to make sure that we're providing the necessary EMS for this building. And sorry, Bob, thank you for letting me jump in on that real quick.
Sure. And just to add to, to what, what Brad indicated, we have done what's considered, what's called an auto turn analysis to ensure proper that the proper turning radius, radii of the emergency vehicles can properly access and maneuver to all, all points of the building. Joe, I don't know if you want to go down one sheet to, I'm going to go over the stormwater management associated with it. Okay. So this is, this is the, the site plan that shows the proposed utilities. You can see we, what we are doing is conveying stormwater through roof drains from the building and through inlets and yard drains surrounding the proposed hardscape. That will be managed with a, a proposed underground combination storage infiltration facility, which you'll see between the building and thirteen street. That has been designed in accordance with the City of Reading Stormwater Management Ordinance along with applicable requirements that the Berks County Conservation District will be reviewing based upon. And as you can see, that will discharge by way of storms sewer into an existing inlet out into thirteen street.
And Mr. Chairman and members, if you've noticed, we had to cut down a lot of trees that were in that, that vicinity there. And we actually tried to save that one tree there, that empress, and it got struck by lightning, darn it. And it blew bark out all the way out into thirteen street. So we ended up having to cut that down. So we're going to reroute some of the storm water. We actually intentionally rerouted that so that we could save that tree initially, but we lost that tree due to a lightning strike back around June. But that's a large reason why we had to take down so many of the trees and, and actually, if you looked at the building initially, originally, they planted sweet gum trees too close to the building. It was really not the best way to plant. However, our landscaping plan, I think, really comes back and enhances this building in a manner and a way that, that shows off the aesthetics. It doesn't cover up the building. And yet we're still able to put in the requirements from store water management, rain gardens, as, as Bob and Christina have designed, that, that's really going to fit and work well within our facility.
And just, just to kind of summarize, we have, we've obviously, we've submitted plans to the City of Reading. And we've also submitted plans to the Berks County Conservation District. This project will require issuance of an NPDES permit, so we will be working with the Conservation District along with the city's engineer as far as compliance with, with stormwater requirements.
And we submitted to the Reading Area Water Authority at the same time.
Okay. So I don't really have a whole lot more to add as far as the site plans. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the planning commission may have. But that basically summarizes what we've done as far as site design and stormwater management.
And if I could just kind of summarize real quick before we get into questions is that we've had kind of a little historical perspective here. Some of the members may know, some of the members might not know is that we restricted access to this building due to what Joe was talking about earlier. And that is we've had three struc-, three different structural engineers look at this building based on various, various portions of this project. And so all three of them have come back and said that this building, the bones of it, the superstructure, the foundations, that they're, they're not a problem. They're actually overdesigned. And the true problem with this, and I have worked with previous members of the City of Reading, it, it is the facade and that's what we're looking to correct. And up on the fourth floor, Berkey did a renovation back in seventy-six and that was not precast. The, the basement, the first two, first through third floors, they're precast with a hollow beam plank. The fourth floor, which is an addition, which the elevator never even reaches that floor, which we're going to make sure that accessibility is for all floors. That, that is where we have the majority of our problem. And that floor is where we're going to strip the entire brick veneer and the CMU backup off that floor. The other floors, exactly, thank you, Joe, is that, you know, if, if you come out there and you look at it, you'll see the top level, how it's stained up there. And that's really from the, the result of the limestone or precast cap that is up there, the caulking joints has failed and moisture has gotten behind there and it's freeze stall cycle. But, but that is the main purpose and it's kind of a little bit of a historical perspective as to why we restricted access. Currently, we have moved everything out of this building. We have stripped it down interior-wise, down to the bare bones minimum. We've taken out all the finishes. We've taken out, you know, all of the carpet, everything else. We stripped it down so that the designers could get in, look at the details of this building. We still have the fire alarm system that we have in place. It's still there. We have still a minimum HVAC heating and cooling to keep the building, you know, from, from being subjective to the elements. It's weather tight. And, you know, what we're trying to do right now is to put the stain in a position where we can walk our CMs that we have not, we're, we're currently in the process of sending out RFPs for CMs to walk them through. And it gives them a good advantage to see what the actual condition is in this building. And so that we can redevelop this building in a manner that is going to be the design we've shown here and that the work that, that all of our team has put forth. And also solicit CMs to see what kind of help they can provide us as well. So that's, that's kind of a little bit of a historical perspective. I hope that you can appreciate that what we're trying to do is create a very open and inviting building for not only our, our faculty and staff and students to appreciate, but also the public as well. And so with that, I'll kind of conclude our presentation and open this up to any questions.
Here. I had a question and totally, totally escapes me now. So I'll turn it over to see if Nelson has anything.
First, I want to take a cruise to the architect inside. Did I hear correctly that the building will be that's available to the general public?
It will be limited to not just completely open. And there is limitations to that. When we have, because we have certain cultural, historical exhibits in the building, you know, we're inviting the public to come there from the pers- perspective of classes, interaction for like our SR, SRI or, you know, the activities we have there, but that's going to be limited and, and, but we still want to make sure that we have accessibility for the public. When I say libraries, students to be able to come in with teachers and activities. We want to have that cultural exchange. If that, if I'm answering your question.
Yes, you have. Thank you. Oh, Will, do you have anything?
Well, yes, thank you. I cannot wait to see, to see these plans. Of course, some of us on this meeting, we cannot see that. So I hope that those will be sent to us as well. We had reviewed a plan, you may recall, a few years ago from Albright for this building to renovate it. And I commented at the time, I said, your campus is beautiful, but this building is not. And as the historian, I tried to identify the architectural styles of buildings. And I agree with the presenter. I was thinking brutalist also. No architect today I'm sure would design a building, especially a, an education building or any institutional building really, that shuts out natural light like that. So I'm really looking forward to seeing this. And from what I'm hearing, I think it's the right approach. It is the focal point of the campus as part of the, you know, what we see in my neighborhood. So I think it'll, I think it'll enhance, enhance the neighborhood and fit in better. So thank you. I think that's prudent not to plant trees too close. Of course, trees will help soak up groundwater as well. So there have been questions about all that with the, with the, the water underneath. I mean, this area of the city, because it's runoff from now Penn. And of course, where Silver Chapel is, the oldest building on campus was originally a spring house. Is there any concern? Have you looked into the engineering about underground streams and any effect that that might have? Have you, have you, you know, are you proposing to reroute anything? Or have you, are, is it not a concern here? Have, have you addressed that? I'm sorry if I, if I missed it at any point.
No, I, I'm gonna let Bob and Christina do the test, technical aspect of that. But we have absolutely looked at that. Now, it's not to say that when we start digging that we find something that's different and we'll have to address that. But we absolutely have looked at that. And I'll, I'll let Bob and Christina get into that further. And we also have rain gardens. So we're trying to find that balance of, of, you know, trying to drain the site, but yet still meet the Berks County Conservation District where they're wanting us to do groundwater infiltration. So they're wanting us to introduce water back out into the ground, but at the same time, we're looking at how to properly drain off the site to, to address existing conditions. So that, that is a fine balance. But Bob and Christina, I'll let you technically address that as well.
Okay. Yeah. What I, what I would add to what Brad just said is the stormwater management facility, which is, like I said, is located between the building and thirteenth street. We had, based upon ordinance requirements and the Pennsylvania Best Management Practices Manual, we're required to do subsurface testing. In other words, we have to get in there and do, do soils and infiltration testing. And as part of that, we have to determine that the area is sufficient for infiltration and does not exhibit any type of soil modeling, any indication of high water table. or anything of, of that sort. So where we have proposed that stormwater management facility, we are basically clear of any concerns associated with high groundwater or, or anything like that. As far as what we are managing, we are managing the increase in impervious that's being proposed as a result of this, so essentially, what is, what is being discharged due to the increase in impervious is being routed, is being routed to this facility and being managed through groundwater infiltration.
Thank you, yeah, it is, it is, it is a tough balance, because we do want the water to go into the ground, but we don't want it to flood but the building and that, and I'm thinking about this, I'm sure you'll consult with the City Arboretum, the approved list for the plantings, because I certainly noticed all the trees have been down. And I wonder if there are some trees that he might recommend, some species that, that take up water better than others. I hadn't thought about that before, or shrubs also, so that might be something to ask about, what, you know, what he, what he's thinking in that regard, if there's any advice there whatsoever. The other obvious question is, Mr. Chairman, is we, of course, had reviewed the plan a couple of years ago on the for the, the former warehouse at the northwest corner of Eleventh and Rockland Street. We know the library's collection was brought over there temporarily. So obviously, there's a plan, I'm sure, to bring that back. If Albright wouldn't mind explaining what the idea is for what they envision over there. I know there's an educational program over there, if they had any thoughts about that, if they didn't mind explaining.
Let me, let me take the opportunity, thank you, that's, that's a good point, so you know, a couple of things with this. We had to get our collection out, and I learned a word called decession. And, and that is getting rid of books that no longer, as, you know, librarians are kind of like hoarders, and, and I love them, we've got great librarians. But in today's digital world, there's no need to have all of these stacks of books on hand, and that's why we're opening this building back up. The, the upper, the library floor and the upper two floors were strictly stacks of books. And so what you've seen now is we've transformed this building more into a updated version of of, of being able to pull in much more use for these spaces, the Black Cultural Center, the Holocaust, those things, which will have the cultural exchange that we want with the community. So with that, we were able to, and that was one of the necessities, Mr. Chairman, is to get that warehouse down there to house the current collection that we need, our archives, and also the books that we're looking to bring back in. Now, that being said, you know, the saying goes, when you build it, they'll come. It's the same thing when it comes to donations, you know, people want to be able to say, hey, listen, can I donate this collection of this? Can I donate this collection of that? And currently with the, the Holocaust, the Nolan, Nolan Collection of local history here, and also the Black Cultural Center, we have more than what we can stick into this building now. So what we're, our plan is to, is to rotate exhibits through. So when we take for the warehouse down on the Eleventh Street and corner of Eleventh and Rockland, our plan is to be able to rotate materials through the books that we bring into the building, that they stay up there and the space is left over down there. We plan on still using that space to, like I say, house future donations, rotate exhibits through. And then we feel that's going to create a, a very creative and inviting environment there that just keeps evolving, if, if, if I may speak. And also, one of the other issues, Mr. Chairman, addressing a comment was we, one of the challenges to this building was to get it to blend into all the Victorian architecture around, and you had the CFA over there, so that's kind of where we picked up the colors on the building to help promote not only the CFA, but to also draw in kind of a modern approach here that's inviting and not, and also blend in well with the current architects around on the site. And I have to say that KBA has done a fantastic job of doing that. Also, our landscape architect, Think Green, we have been working with the Arboretum at the city, and we absolutely, we've met with him a couple of times out there. So we understand that he does not want non-invasive trees on the sites, so we have looked at that. We also have rain gardens that we're putting in, and I'm a little skeptical about rain gardens, but Think Green has, has told me that we can develop those to where they're not a trash collection point. So, you know, we're really trying to walk the balance between aesthetics, functionality, and the code limitations that we have to work within.
No, I, I think this is, this is very well thought out, and as people who are associated with Albright know, I I always felt that the Center for the Arts is like the sore thumb on campus. Because that architect, that architect didn't care about anything else on the campus. She just built what she wanted to build. And, and, and I think it kind of shows in the fact that that building had to be almost completely renovated within fifteen years because the, because the glazing and the windows and a bunch of the things were not correct. So, but that's, that's my comment on that.
Well, this, your point is well taken, and trust, trust us when we say that we struggled with, you know, what are we going to do to try to blend this building in with the existing structures? And that was a challenge, the CFA is no doubt a challenge. You're absolutely correct in what you said towards that, as, as I have found out in my three years now with Albright, that you, you get these historical perspectives all the time. So the, the challenge has been exactly that. The challenge has been is, what can we do to take and transform, redevelop this building, reutilize as much as we can to, you know, from a sustainability, from cost conscience? You know, all of that, what can we do? And that's been a huge challenge. You know, some of it is, you know, all the new utilities and the sites and things like that, the code lends us to, we have to do it. And, but how do we do it in a manner that's the most cost efficient? But yet, at the same time, if you look at this, and this to me has really sold, you know, every time we look at this building, the elegance of this building, and especially if you're down in the football stadium, you know, at this time of night, and you're looking up at the stadium, and you're looking up through Exeter Drive there, you, you're looking up through there at this thing, it's, it's really going to be a building where we feel is going to say, hey, what is that? It's going to invite students that from all over, that, that is either at the football stadium for whatever sports athletic events that's going to see this building. It's going to promote curiosity. And if you look at here on this side of the building, where we have the outdoor patio area, this was one of, when I was interviewing all the different design teams that were pursuing this project, that I have said multiple times, that is going to be the, the best square footage on the entire campus. Everybody's going to want to hang out there. And, and also at the front of the building, that's a cool place too, where you come up from visitors parking, and you walk up to the building, that's, that's another great place to hang out, where we have new recruits coming to the, the campus, their parents, and, and that first impression, it, it, it makes a big difference. And again, I don't want to hog up the whole time here, but we're, as you can see, I'm, I'm totally excited about this, I'm ready to execute this project.
Frank, do you have anything?
It was, I found the presentation, you know, obviously I couldn't see the PowerPoint at the moment, but very, very, very informative again. And it sounds like it's, it's, as it's moving forward, it's really going to make a, a strong footprint in kind of our one gateway areas of the city, northeast areas kind of a gateway, so up in that area, I've really traveled. So the visibility and aesthetics, I think, are sometimes a little bit more important when you have a high visibility area gateway, so it sounds like it just sounds very exciting on where this is going, so. But at the moment, I don't have any specific questions, those are just my comments from the presentation I've seen or heard.
And we'll check in with Daniel to see if he's there. If Daniel wants to jump in, you can jump in anytime. Let's turn it over to staff, I think they have a few things that they would like to go over with the team.
Brad King has asked us to develop at least a tentative project schedule, just for their, with, with their expectations, where we've been coordinating with them for a few months now, it started with a one-stop session. So Brad, Brandy is going to be looking for an email that I had sent to you with the project schedule, so we could all look at it. I think I sent it to everyone anyway. That's what I recall with.
If, if I may say, just a, a quick, and I appreciate that, I should have been a little bit, I should have talked about project schedule real quick here. But our plan here is, you know, given how we navigate through the entitlement portion of this, you know, our plan is right now zoning hit went very well, as, as you guys might know, or, or if you don't, it went very well with Tom and Brandy. So we anticipate NIPSY's permit will probably be our holdup, but we're looking to break ground sometime late first quarter, early to mid second quarter. And that is depending upon our bidding process and our, you know, just getting through the entitlements here a little bit, and making sure that there's no holdups there, that no surprises, that we, we don't plan or anticipate. But that's, you know, Jackie's been out talking about groundbreaking in March. She might be a little bit ahead of her ski tips, but, you know, I appreciate her pushing, because I'm a pusher too when it comes to this project schedule, we want to get it done.
It's feasible, so what we have on, on the screen right now is the draft project schedule.
I don't know how to gain control again. Okay, there we go. There you go.
Email. Okay, so we're right here on November fifteenth, where the Planning Commission Workshop session is. Somewhere between November eighteenth and November twenty-first, we're going to have the preliminary plan review issued. November twenty-second is the Planning Commission meeting for the discussion and all comments issued by, by my office. On December fourteenth, that's what the zoning hearing board will render its decision on your, your application that was submitted to the zoning hearing board, if it's required. Was it determined that it was required?
No, from my knowledge, Brandy, you corrected me wrong, we did not need any relief, so we did not need a hearing. Now, Brandy, correct me if I'm wrong there.
No, that was right, Tom mentioned, he asked you the questions about the parking, and then realized that you probably wouldn't need that, wouldn't need any relief. That was my recollection.
This schedule is this tentative, I mean, it can be bumped up and be a little bit more aggressive. But since you don't have to be required to do the zoning hearing board, you can up your schedule a little bit, so we were thinking about the resubmission of the preliminary plan could be as early as, as January second, again, that could be earlier now. There is no zoning hearing board that has to render a decision. The Planning Commission could definitely entertain preliminary plan approval with conditions by January twenty-fourth. And then we were looking at your final plan submission being submitted in, in February. By then, the NPDES permit should be considered, possibly approved. And I would say February, March plan will be approved. Final.
Well, that, that all works very well with us, and we have no problem with that.
That's the worst case scenario now, before taking out the zoning hearing board factor. So I think it could be done a little bit earlier now, I think February is a, is a doable day.
Let me regroup with Brandy, and we can see how to adjust if we need to. And also, do you guys want us to come to in person to the next meeting, or how, how do you feel about that?
Well, we're going to be, the next meeting is going to be on November twenty-second. If you've heard our, our previous presentation, they're going to skip that meeting and just have everything all set to go for the December meeting. Our December meeting gets moved up a week because of the holidays. So I, I think that's the meeting that we consider possible preliminary plan approval. If everything's like all in order, we'll, we'll get a better grasp of that once we get to finish the review. We'll also have to have the opportunity to discuss with the other departments, Public Works Department, Fire Rescue, which you've already met with. We just want to make sure we got everyone involved at that time.
I'll check in with Brandy and you guys to see whether or not if we should be there in person or not at that December twentieth meeting.
Okay, yeah, it, it might be difficult for you, but I, I'm thinking now that it's December twentieth might be something that's a, a doable situation for you for preliminary.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I see, I see a lot of great things here, and this is a much better submission than the submission a few years ago, when they were just going to put the addition on the back of the building to get the elevators in there. So I, you know, I, I see the work, and it's fantastic.
I appreciate that, and I, I meant to, one of the members' comments earlier, forget about that previous submission, just throw it out the window, this is a totally different design. This is a, a much better design, I will tell you that, it's a much more, again, I keep harping on the fact that it's, it's much more inviting. Student-wise, faculty-wise, it is, it is no comparison in the designs. Not, not only aesthetically, but also the programming that was thought about. And Kimmel Bogarrett has done a fantastic job of putting ten pounds in a five-pound bag, I'm going to just tell you that right now.
Does anyone have anything else for the Albright team? Okay, I, well, we thank you very, very much for this very thorough presentation. And we can see all the hard work that, that has gone into this, and we really appreciate it. As you said, just keep in touch with Brandy. If, if you would like to come in November, we're here. But, you know, we'll, we'll definitely look forward to seeing, seeing you in December.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your time, and we sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Good evening. Thank you. All right, next, we go on to the Will wanted to bring up some things about the Planning Commission training sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this hour, and I wasn't planning on saying a lot, I, I, I attended the one on, it was the overview on the municipal planning code, which was, which was very helpful. And I passed on all those materials to you. And one of the things they provided was a draft of bylaws, and I did not get to review that. But I know we've been, we've been working on that, well, we really haven't worked on it, we haven't really focused on it. We brought it up over the last few years, I think we're trying to get back to that. And so I think that might be a starting point to look at. I know one thing was mentioned in the code, I had brought this up as a suggestion a few years back, was of course, it's a little better now, we've expanded the size of this body, the city has. of course, it's a little better now. We've expanded the size of this body, the city has uh, to seven from five. But the thought about, you know, possibly having alternate members, uh, because you know, sometimes it is hard to get a quorum. Um, but we, I had given some uh, thoughts, a suggestion on the bylaws sometime back. I'd have to search for those where they are. It's mostly about bringing things up to current standards, like, you know, electronic communication and so forth. And uh, so whatever the staff has on that, uh, we can look at that. I mean, that's the main thing I wanted to go over uh, at this, at this point, and I know other people attended and staff attended some training sessions. Maybe they want to go into, into more detail, but it was very interesting. Uh, and uh, I certainly, you know, gained a better perspective as a result. I think it was well worth it. So that, that's all I'm going to, unless somebody has any questions, I don't want to go on too long on that, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Will. Um, yeah, we do have, uh, we do have emails and related materials. So um, just so everyone knows, I did give them, I did give the materials for the bylaws that we've accumulated over the past few years to uh, to Brandy today, so that um, Brandy and Michelle can be on the same, on the, on the uh, on, on the same path as, as they're working through uh, working through this. Um, and then uh, because of the time, we, we won't go into any, any details about that. Um, zoning and saldo amendments. Um, I discussed a few things with, with uh, with Jerome. Um, I will put together a summary about that for, for everyone and uh, give a little bit of background for our new members also uh, as to what, as to what's going on with that, because some of the, some of the stuff we discussed goes back almost 20 years. So, so I will take care of that for, for everyone. Um, I don't know if Jerome has anything to say about the zoning and saldo amendment.
Yeah, we're in a, in a draft phase right now uh, with staff and uh, it's a, it's an effort that's between myself, Shannon, Brandy, Fran, um, and uh, as well as Jamal. So uh, we're uh, trying to like prioritize the most important ones. This goes back, this is about a three-year effort. Uh, we're taking a lot of Dave's notes, uh, Harrison's uh, notes that he had had uh, and we're working with them and also uh, attempting to uh, uh, again coordinate that with uh, you staff as well. So I would, I would suspect uh, at our next meeting or the, or the following meeting, we'll have a draft to you on uh, at least the first phase.
Okay, great. And we are in November, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so uh, we will not have a workshop next month since we've moved up the regularly scheduled meeting by one week. Uh, but we will resume, um, uh, we will hopefully resume in January, which means that next meeting, we need to approve the meeting schedule.
Yes, so everyone would, will need to bring their uh, their calendars to make sure that the uh, the dates that we have scheduled, this includes uh, the solicitor and, and as well. We typically have the uh, the third, third, third Tuesday reserved for the workshop session and the fourth Tuesday for the uh, planning mission regular meeting. Uh, but that can change. Um, December will be the time to announce that.
Yeah, yeah, so uh, everyone uh, be, be ready for that at the, at the next meeting. Um, and we will, um, we will go over that. Uh, does anyone have anything for the good of the order? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much. Uh, I think this was a very successful meeting once again. And I think, I think that and we are opening communications with some of the big players and keeping this open communication, which for many, many years was, we didn't have. Um, so I'm really, uh, really, really thankful of everyone, everyone who came in today. So uh, very good. Um, we will see everyone on Tuesday at six o'clock, either here in the room or on Zoom.
Thank you.